All right, well, welcome everyone. Thanks for joining us today in this work session around the Lake County Courthouse. Um, I'm not sure who, who wants to go first or lead this. Uh, I'm pretty excited to hear everything you guys have to bring to the table today. So I will hand the mic off to whoever wants to take lead.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Davis with Reynolds Ash, um, I'm project architect and I'll be leading the meeting. So it's nice to have the commissioners on board today. Welcome. Um, this is sort of our ongoing O A C as well. Uh, but I do have an agenda and I'll be going through that. So I'll give a quick update. Um, and then we will give you guys an update of where we are with the plans. And then we do have a couple of new business items to go through with our M E P team that we want to present to the group.
One, maybe uh, maybe we should do some introductions real quick, just so we know who everyone is who's in the room. Uh, I'll start first. I'm county commissioner Andy Lee.
County Commissioner Matt Bullock.
Don't be shy.
Yeah, Stuart Clark. I've worked with the county oversight.
I already introduced myself to the commissioners, Katie Joxler with uh, D P M. Uh, the owner's rep on the project. So in case anybody else didn't know me. I've also got Colleen on here with D P M.
Waiting room on my left.
Okay.
Michael Irwin, Lake County Public Works.
Ryan Young, project manager with F C I.
And Mike Potter, uh, pre-construction manager at F C I.
How about my team? Scott, you want to introduce yourself?
Laura Wainon Scott, uh, this is Todd Raper with D P M.
Amber, Brian.
This is uh, Brian Carpenter. I'm the uh, mechanical engineer with S G M.
And then we also have Scott Dill on the call. He's in our Pagosa office. He's with R A N A.
I'm Amber Hames, the electrical engineer on the project, S G M.
Is that everyone?
Pretty much, I believe. Uh, most everybody. Let's go ahead and get, get moving then. Uh, thanks for, everyone for showing up. Uh, thanks Lauren for taking the lead on this and yeah, like I said, I'm excited to figure, hear everything I can about where we're at.
All right, can you enable um, sharing and I will share my screen?
Okay. See making, I normally don't drive these, so give me a second. I just made you a co-host. I don't, or do I have to make you the host?
Excellent. Nope, that worked.
Cool.
All right. Um, so quick, uh, some housekeeping items and a little bit of background. Um, we are in schematic design. So we've, over the last month, month and a half, we've been going through some of the programming with the team and we've also been working on as built. So we've spent some time in the building. Um, really honed in on existing conditions. And we have a set of existing plans and a working three D model now. Um, that has all of the existing conditions, et cetera, documented. And that's um, that's something that's going to continue to be refined through this process. Um, but that's going to be an important tool. And obviously at the end of this whole process, you have that as a deliverable. Um, a working model of the building, et cetera. Let me. So this shows the existing three D and, and obviously this will be enhanced as we go through this process, everything from public meetings to three D renderings, et cetera. We also have been going through a series of um, user group meetings. So we've refined that program. We've made some adjustments based on the original concept. Um, and we have a, a nice set of working plans and we're continuing to meet with the user group. So we've met with uh, courts, we've met with the sheriff multiple times, the D A. Um, obviously Commissioner Bullock, we've met with you a couple of times on the B O C C space. Um, and then community planning and development. So we're, we're kind of going through our second cycle now of revisiting with those groups as we've refined the plans and I will present those to you here in a moment. We are working on one of the additional meetings that we're trying to schedule where we want to meet separately with M W L and S G M. That's kind of an internal uh, design team coordination meeting. We are also jumping into systems. So I have S G M on the call today to go through some preliminary options on the building systems. And so S G M is our mechanical engineering plumbing engineer. They've analyzed the existing conditions. Obviously there's some issues with HVAC in particular. But those are some kind of big decisions that we need to tackle early because they impact the rest of the design. They impact, you know, real estate within the building for chases, for ceilings, et cetera. Um, so those are, that, that's something we're going to talk about later today, um, as we go through the plans. Um, our team has met with the Leadville. We've met with the fire marshal. Um, had a really nice meeting with him, went through the building. Obviously life safety is a big concern. The building's unsprinkled. It will continue to be non-sprinkled. Um, but went through some of his concerns. Went through process expectations, et cetera. And one of the big things that the fire marshal is concerned about is just during construction as well, right? If F C I is in there welding something, um, or if there's any hazards during construction, the fire marshal obviously wants to um, understand everything that's going to happen in that building. We also met this week with um, Leadville Planning Department. Um, really good meeting. We went through all of their expectations for deliverables, for process. Um, we talked about the scope of this project. Obviously they're not as concerned about what's happening, you know, on the internal renovation side of things, but they are interested in things that are going to impact the building envelope, things that impact utilities, public works. Um, and some of the aesthetics. So it sounds like we're targeting kind of an early December submittal to them. But then that'll involve the P and Z commission as well as city council, just to get through their land use approvals. This will be a minor site plan review process. Um, and that has to do with square footage being impacted and the addition. Um, and then of course, this will also involve the historic preservation board. Um, obviously we'll have to go through their hoops. There's a certificate of appropriateness. Everything that we're doing is, is really on the minor secondary facades. So I think it should be pretty straightforward. But again, those are things that we've just, we're starting to check off those boxes in terms of making sure we understand all the deliverables over the next few months. Um, survey. So Katie, Colleen, any update on that? Has that been scheduled?
I sent another email out yesterday. Um, Kevin and Stuart, did you see that also?
I did see it, but I don't have an update.
Yeah, I think Kevin, for his part, was looking for a point person.
Okay.
Um, I, I know he usually talks with Michael Irwin. Um, and then I don't know if there's uh, any other survey work that may have been previously tentatively scheduled for a different project. And Kevin had a question about that. If it, if it made sense to consolidate anything. I think he just needs to talk to somebody on the county side directly would be the most efficient way to um, do that. But Kevin is still the contractor, the surveyor is still, the contract is in his court to review and sign. So um, scheduling is getting a little ahead, but I thought it might as well at least start talking about it, maybe get something on the calendar.
Okay. Um, and obviously from a design team perspective, we're, we're kind of hungry for that. We will need that in terms of our, uh, developing our model. We do all the topography. We make sure that's accurate. We're going to be impacting that a little bit with the addition, obviously, and then the secure parking lot. Um, we also need that for the lot consolidation. So as I'm sure you guys are aware, currently that property is actually a series of long linear lots of, you know, when a Leadville was originally platted, all of those little lots are still there. Um, it was never consolidated into one parcel. And so we need to officially do that. That'll coincide with our site plan review process. But anyway, that's something that we just need to track and, and make sure that that's kind of moving along. That'll be important to just keeping our schedule as well. Um, soils report, obviously that's underway also, correct?
Yes, that, I think, um, the contract I mentioned that needs signature, Andy, that's the one, the GeoTech. So I'll check to see if it, if it came back yet. And if not, I'll, I'll ping you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. I'll get it to you here in just a few moments.
And then um, with grants. The U S D A is something we're also tracking. Obviously everything is at a standstill right now with some of the government shutdown issues. But I know Candace was tackling that and it sounded promising. So.
Uh, we sent the request to modify. Um, we're just waiting to hear back from them as soon as they're not furloughed.
Okay. Um, and then the underfunded courts grant that's in, and really we are um, focusing on that presentation for November thirteenth. And Commissioner Bullock, we're obviously, we want to get you up to speed today and over the next few weeks. But I do have the draft presentation and we can go through that and, and kind of prep for that as well in game plan.
So Lauren, I think I'm going to present it, but Matt is going to be going with me. So I'd love for three of us to run through that. So that way if you're asked questions while you're there, we're both prepped to respond. Um, just so we can I don't know, I'd love for us to do a great job and get two million dollars.
Yes, excellent. Yeah. So do you want R A N A there? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, if you'd love to join us, that would be great. I think the more support we can show up with and show that we're, we're really wanting to get this would be lovely.
Okay.
We don't have a time back from them yet. As soon as we have the time, more than happy to share that with you.
And obviously one thing we're going to focus on is refining some exhibits. We want a little bit of eye candy and some graphics in there. And so we can, we'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks as well. That's all I had in terms of housekeeping overall update. Anyone else have anything? Stuart, Katie, Colleen?
We do have a meeting this afternoon at three with potential um, company to take our, our records from the courthouse, climate control piece. So I'll have an update ready probably on Monday.
Thanks, Stuart.
All right. Well, with that, I want to go through the plans now. Um, let me bring those up and I can walk you through where we are with the space planning. Can you all see the site plan that's up in the PDF?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Um, so we want to go through the current layouts. Um, this is the lower level, the ground floor of what is being proposed. And everything that is colored is essentially our primary scope. Things that are grayed out or white or generally circulation or things out of scope that we're not really modifying. So on the ground level, I'll start with the west side, this blue area. So we're moving the jail from the main level down to the lower level. And you will see everything in blue will become the sheriff's space. Everything in orange, including this little, this little uh, blue box here, this is going to be the addition. So what you're looking at, this footprint is about eight hundred and twenty-five square feet of an actual addition that we're putting on that north side. Um, this will include the Sally port. Um, so a vehicle comes in, drops off, and then we have a series of access points. We have the new elevator with the elevator vestibule. And then this is another secondary vestibule to release um, folks from the jail. And then this is a little storage area that coincides with the kitchen. But this is the new footprint. Um, in terms of the jail space, we're going to keep this existing stair. That was a big finding through our code analysis and some of the early discussions. Um, originally, I think there was some hope that we could shift that down, but due to cost, structural concerns and code, there's a big code reason why we don't want to touch that. Um, we're going to leave it in place and work around it. So the existing access points will be here to the north. We're going to create a new entry point just off of that stair and we're going to close off this corner here. Um, but you enter on this lower level, everything will have access control. You'll have to have credentials, obviously, to get into some of these doors. Um, so the general public will not be um, entering these doors. And then this is the new secure parking lot, obviously, for the sheriff and the courts. But you'll enter the building. All of this is sort of the original program. We have office space for patrol sergeants or patrol and corporals. We have an open bullpen for uh, patrol staff. Then we have offices for patrol captains, detectives, sergeants. And then really everything, once you enter this door right here, this is the secure jail area. So this has a warming kitchen with a little storage and laundry area, the control room, interview room. And then right off of the Sally port, this is the intake and processing area withholding cells around the perimeter. So all of this is a pretty secure area. We've been refining this with Sheriff Speckman over the last couple of weeks. Um, and we're starting to kind of dig into the details with some of the equipment. Um, needs in each, each space, et cetera. Any questions on the jail area? And then we're leaving the main corridor alone, but we would be looking at adding a secure access point into the jail. So again, the D A is down here. There's some additional offices, uh, the boiler room, custodial uses. The general public would still have access to this elevator. So we want to create this new secure access point where you have to have credentials to enter the sheriff's side of things. Um, and the new armory uh, goes right here, which is currently a conference room right now. We are looking to upgrade the restrooms and we're exploring a couple of options right now. Um, we were looking at modifications here that would take out the janitor room and optimize the current men's restroom. And the other option that we've been pursuing that we like is fitting a new unisex tweedy right here behind your um, this chimney shaft, and this would stack on every floor. Uh, it works fairly well. We think it would be pretty economical than trying to do some of the demo and getting into this um, existing restroom area. So this is one option that we've been pursuing. And that would mean every floor gets one new unisex restroom. And then on the east side of the building, so this is kind of tucked into the grade, um, this would be the new evidence area for the sheriff. And this is, this is also being tracked as an add alternate, um, just given costs. But this will have its own dedicated ventilation. Um, we're, we're dividing up these spaces. You'll have secure entry points for evidence drop off. And then the evidence tech will have a workstation here and they will be processing all of the evidence. Um, this is sort of the primary storage area. And we're looking at coordinating with Space Saver on the layout of this and for all the F F and E that would be utilized for these pass-through cabinets and storage cabinets, et cetera. Um, and then there's a small workstation here for the evidence staff. And then there is, there needs to be a place where D A, et cetera, can interface. And if they need to look at evidence, if they need to return evidence, et cetera. Um, that's this pocket right here. So that's, this is an area where they can come in, they can ask for evidence, look at it, and then this is just some additional storage. And we have refined this for the larger group, not just the commissioners. This has evolved a little bit over the last week. We've refined the layout of the space. Um, one of the things that this remodel impacts, obviously, is the existing storage in the building. Um, currently, all of this, some of this is clerk and recorder storage. As Stuart mentioned, this is something that kind of needs to happen parallel to what we're doing. Um, I think the county's working on finding a new home for some of this storage offsite. Um, obviously this building, you know, every square inch is utilized. Uh, but this is something that came up, you know, I think the assessor and the treasurer has a lot of um, records, et cetera. I don't know that they're used on a daily basis, but um, certainly it's something that if we can find a home for them offsite, then, then that's helpful. There will be right now, the sheriff is utilizing some of this for sheriff's storage. Obviously, if we can execute everything that's happening in green, then it does free up a little bit of additional building storage over here. So these two areas would free up. And then we're going to have a conversation about the generator here in a minute, but this is also something that uh, is up for discussion. This generator is thirty years old. Um, doesn't meet code with some issues. And so we're going to talk about that um, with S G M in a moment. And then the D A, so the district attorney here is this uh, pink color. They have eighteen hundred-ish square feet, you know, right now it's, this would be a light renovation for their space, maybe doing some, a little bit of partitioning, but just making that a more useful, safe, secure and efficient space for them. Um, yeah, I think that's a, that's also an add alternate in this project. Any questions on the lower level? Okay. So moving to the main level. So this is, again, if you're walking off of Harrison, this is the main entry lobby. Um, not really touching anything to the south, which would be the B O C C offices, the assessor spaces, et cetera. Um, other than what would be required for mechanical or electrical. So right here, right off the lobby, we have the B O C C chambers. This is one of our scope items. And so the focus of this space, um, it's in fairly good shape. A couple of the requests have been additional light, um, ventilation, possibly a second exit. Uh, new carpet. Those are some of the priorities in there. So what we had discussed is adding a window on this north side. I think it's a, it's going to be cost prohibitive. There's a planter right here. And so adding a door and access, I think is problematic. It's on the north side, et cetera. Um, but a window here would be fairly easy to achieve and it's also not too disruptive to that primary facade. Um, we like the idea of adding a door on the south side of this space. I think this is easy to achieve. Um, we can adjust that radiator. And this provides a second exit, but also some cross ventilation and a little bit more visibility back to the main lobby. One thing we had discussed was this could be a window as well. Um, instead of the door, you could at least get a window here for additional visibility light, et cetera. But this kind of achieves the objective of what we had discussed. You keep the general layout. Um, you do technically, you would have two exits out of there. Um, and then new finishes for the flooring. That's sort of the, the base scope that we've discussed.
Is there no issue with removing the flooring and asbestos?
That's something. Yeah, so right now it's covered. Um, and it's just encapsulated. I think we'll, we'll discuss how far we take that. Um, I think there's also some air quality issues in there, but yeah, that's something that we'll talk more about with, with Stuart, with F C I and how far the abatement goes. And then one thing to note, you know, there's, most of the doors in this building are non-compliant in terms of door hardware and then the size. So this is something we need to track. Um, technically, these door leaves do not meet A D A. We might look at switching those out, adding one true three oh seven oh leaf. Um, but changing out the hardware as well. So that's something that is on our list if we touch that.
Could we get those doors to open the other way if we were going to change them out? That would help us with some seating.
Mm-hmm. Yep. You'll, we'll need to look at that jam, obviously, and that would impact the jam as well. But yes, that's doable.
Every inch in this room is pretty, pretty crucial. We're kind of rats in a cage in here.
Um, and then the salmon color is Tracy's space. So this is the clerk and recorder. This is not part of the scope, however. There is kind of a critical impact in that the voting room is currently right here. So there's lots of, of state regulations regarding, you know, when you're counting ballots, when you're going through an election and what's required. That's a very secure, sensitive space. Um, in the proposed concept, this gets absorbed and this space becomes part of community and planning development. And this was something we flagged early on, like we need to, there needs to be a plan for that ballot room. And certainly as elections start happening over the next couple of years, you know, we need to have a plan for that. So I think Stuart's been doing great. He's been talking with her a little bit. We're, we're thinking if there's a plan to move storage offsite, then it frees up this entire space for her. Right now, right now, this space is just record storage. And if we can shift that voting room to this space, that would probably be the most economical solution. The reason is that that space is tied to your server room. There's lots of access control, right? You have to have a separate um, a separate server. Everything is on a separate system entirely for that room. So if we can just shift it a few feet here, you preserve that connection. Um, she can make it secure and she can grow it a little bit, which sounds like that's her objective. So that, that's something that I think everyone needs to be aware of and have a plan for in the midterm. Um, the other part of this is right here. This is currently a lactation room, a break room, storage. Again, we like the idea if we could just make this a unisex A D A space that addresses the tweedy issue and you could, you could leave this space alone. And then you have some additional leftover space that could be conference or storage for the clerk. So. Any question on the clerk area? Does that make sense?
Yeah, did you guys talk to Tracy and uh, I mean, obviously you did and she's cool with that plan?
She is not, huh?
We, we didn't talk to her at all. We are talking to you first.
Yeah.
She's probably gonna, you're probably going to have to make the decision if you want that to happen or not.
Um.
I don't think anyone asked her, did they Stuart?
Uh, Tracy is open to a larger voting room. Um, I know that she holds the records uh, pretty near and dear. Um, haven't crossed that bridge yet, but um, she would like a nicer voting room and that's kind of what um, how I'm approaching that with her at the moment.
Thanks, Stuart.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thanks, Stuart.
I have one question. Uh, I, I can hold it though, Colleen, if you want to go.
I can ask, I'll follow you.
Um, one thing that's lacking is a place to do my dishes when I make myself lunch. I wonder if we could, and also part two, the question is, are we statutorily obligated to keep a lactating room or is that just, that's not a thing or, so two questions. Anybody?
Yeah, it's our understanding, it seems like you should have some provision for that. If you do it within each department, I think you're achieving that. But yeah, that, that was one of our concerns too, is if you're taking away a building common break room. Should you replace it somewhere else?
Yeah. My question would be, it feels like we're carving out a lot of extra space for the clerk's office. But we're still stuck in this canned ham here in the BOCC room. Is there any way that we could shift the wall a little bit into the clerk's office if they're getting more space? And have that recess, say just that wall that connects the clerk office and the BOCC room? No, the, just her, the office, not the clerk's.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, that little. How, how much does it add to expenses to move that wall back like four to six feet to give space for staff to have a desk and work alongside of us and then enhance the public seating area? Yeah, just something like that.
That's a good idea, Andy.
We can work around the column. I'm not aware that there's anything else in there that would be structural or I think these are just non-load-bearing partitions.
Okay. Cause you see, you see how like our staff desk is kind of just right off the corner of ours? And it's just the flow and the space in the room and the way we're all interacting, we're right on top of each other. And you know, I've, I've watched people trip over each other in here trying to get to their seat or get out of their seat or go to the, so I'm just wondering if, you know, I, I want to be kind of lower on the prioritization list. I know we've got really important things to do, but looking out for my staff and being able to have a comfortable and even a little bit healthier kind of work environment does come to mind when I'm looking at how these plans are and who, who's kind of getting more space and whatnot. So just something that comes to my mind.
That's actually a really good point to what the, what I was going to bring up and I just, I want to be really clear with the BOCC that the COP funding that we have available does not fund any of this. It funds what's in blue on the first floor and what's in blue on the second floor, and that's even really tight. So all of these other things like the Sally Port, anything that's not blue, I would say. We don't have funding, so that's a discussion you all are going to have to have, like, does it make sense to add in this scope while we're being efficient? We have a general contractor on site, all of those things? Or is it something that we want to phase out over the next, you know, five to ten years? So I just want to be really clear. Our ANA is planning the building, but this is going to have to most likely be chunked in phases if we have to, if we're working within what's in the COP.
Absolutely. When I look at all the things I want in one hand and the dollars we have in another hand, they don't quite line up.
And, and I know we're going to go onto the third floor probably, but right now we don't have funding for the court's layout yet, which Lauren might be going through here next, but that is also not funded, but we're hoping that some of this grant funding will help us be able to accomplish a good portion of.
Great, okay, thanks.
Yep. So then moving back through this main level. Another change would be as you go down this corridor, right now, you go to essentially the sheriff's area and the jail. What we would be doing is we would be creating two new entry points. One would be for community planning and development, which is going to be to the right in yellow. And then this main door would here, this would all be storefront, this would all be the entry to the sheriff's admin area. So I, I think in one hand, it presents a little bit more of a, a nice community interface. Those, those doors can have nice signage. This is the new entry for the community planning space and the sheriff. We're creating a new conference room off of this hallway. So this could be an opportunity. This doesn't necessarily have to be dedicated to the sheriff. This could be a, a shared building common feature. But this is right off this main corridor as well. So I think if, if community and building need to meet with somebody on a project, they can peel off into that conference room. Or if the sheriff wants to have a breakout, et cetera. This would be outfitted with a monitor. We have natural light and again, it's just, it's right off the main corridor. So I think that is attractive. As you enter community and building, the community and planning and development office, they are going to live right above that new Sally Port. So again, this is that addition that we've been looking at. A portion of their space sits above that. They would have a public counter here, so this is sort of the public area with the permit text counter and a waiting space. And then we looked at just making this as efficient as possible, but this corridor would just be lined with offices and staff. And this meets her current needs and midterm. I think, you know, this builds in a little bit of flexibility for potentially one or two additional staff for her. And then she has a separate break slash conference area that they could utilize. The area in orange is the second floor of that elevator and elevator vestibule, so tracking to the next level. When you enter the sheriff's office, you can come through this main door. Again, this would have access control credentials for a card reader. You'd have a small pocket here for a transaction window. So people don't, the public don't have to actually come into the space. They can just utilize the window. Staff can come up, serve them as necessary. If you are coming in as staff, you can use your card reader. Then you have victim services here. You have a small interview waiting room here, which is tied to victim services. You have the existing stair under sheriff, Sheriff Speckman's office. And then this is essentially an open office area for staff, for storage files, copy printer, et cetera. And then off to the side is dispatch. So they need a little bit more of a secure area. They have work stations, they'll have the IT radio room, which is right here at the center, their own restroom, et cetera. So a pretty efficient layout for them. They do have the option if they need to go upstairs to the courts or down to the jail, they can utilize that secure vestibule. And that is the scope of work on the main level. Any questions on this? So then, go ahead.
Oh, no, I said I have none.
Okay. So then the upper level. The main stair lobby, that would remain the same. And the virtual courtroom and library, but really everything in tan here. It's a significant change for the courtroom to address all of the security impacts. You can see that third level of the elevator and elevator vestibule to the right. Because of that, we're, we're changing everything with how the in custody are brought to the courtroom in the jail. So we're essentially flipping everything in the courtroom. And we're building in some additional needs for them. So as soon as you enter the courtroom, we're creating this little vestibule right here, a second door, and then a separate attorney-client space. That was pretty high on their needs and something that they were, they found really useful. The existing courtroom is fairly oversized, so they felt like they could lose some seating area. And obviously by reconfiguring the jury and the judge's area, it, it eats up a little bit of square footage. But this is the third level unisex restroom that we could build in. This would stack to the, the toydees below. We're taking out one row of seating in the courtroom as well as this back corner, so the, the seating gallery area is a little bit tighter. And then what we're doing, you'll notice we flipped the jury to this side so that the jury has a secure access back to the jury deliberation room. And then the the staff benches flipped to the right side, and then we're working through this new clerk, witness, and judge's bench. We're going to try to meet ADA. We'll have to ramp up. We're creating a series of steps to make that happen. But the big change is that we now have a secure corridor behind the judge's bench. And now that jury did, the jury room is now over here. We're creating two judges' chambers right behind the bench, so it creates a lot more security with how they access the space, how they leave the building, enter the floor, et cetera. So they would come in through this secure corridor, access their spaces. The general office area back here, quarter of the clerk, some of the additional support space will remain the same. And then the clerk's offices, they interface with the public, obviously. We're shifting this double door back so that this becomes, this becomes the separation between public and private. The public can access these work counters and the clerks as needed. And the clerks have a separate secure exit back behind the public. And again, the stair remains the same and all of that would be credential, et cetera. So a fairly significant change on the upper level that really improves safety and security for the entire building, obviously, with that new elevator.
Great. Would the new elevator accommodate someone in a wheelchair just from the general public or is that specific, is that just for inmates?
That would just be for sheriff purposes, correct?
So we're not obligated to upgrade our, our elevators since we're touching it, remodeling it, there's no obligation to?
Correct. So, yep, we've, we've reviewed this pretty thoroughly and with the, the code consultant, but the way that the code reads, this is an existing building, five oh three of the existing building code talks about if you're touching it, you have to upgrade it. So the, the existing elevator would remain as is. That serves the general public, you know, we're still, anything we're touching, we're, we are making sure that it meets ADA. And we still have our accessible routes throughout these spaces. But yeah, that elevator is technically noncompliant, but it's an existing condition, so therefore we don't have to improve it.
Okay. Is there anyone, any way for someone in a wheelchair to get to that third floor? I guess they could squeeze into that elevator.
Yeah, I think it's a, you have to be, you have to, you enter from the front, but then you'd have to back out is my understanding. Right, you can't do the turning radius.
Well, that looks great. I know, you know, upstairs, there's a ton of security concerns and that was a really big issue with the whole setup of this. And you know, between that and the sheriff's office, that's where the majority, that was the prioritization.
Yeah.
You know, top levels there, so if we can get that stuff addressed, you know, and have everybody be happy under one roof again, that'd be a major accomplishment.
And there is a variation on this that we've presented. I think the county, we're working through this. The change would be that the sheriff takes over everything on the lower level. So if you recall the concept I just walked you through, the, the DA is on the lower level right here. But we, we felt like, given the changes, if the sheriff had everything on the lower level, he's got the evidence. This, he has the jail. It actually eliminates some access points and it makes it a little bit more secure from his standpoint. The public entry for the sheriff would be off of the south side. And then all of his, the sheriff, undersheriff, their offices now go to this back corner. And again, this is their new secure parking lot here.
Lauren, we're not seeing your pointer anymore.
We're still looking at the third floor.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Yep, so this is the option two that we had submitted. The DA goes to the main level and the sheriff now takes over this corner. I think this is attractive to them just because you have continuity, you know, in terms of restroom use, in terms of access to the jail. You don't have the public coming down here, other than right here. So the general public, this would be the entry off of the south side of the building to their transaction window. But everything else beyond that is a security point and would be credential personnel only. I think they, they found that appealing. It does seem a little bit more efficient, right? They're right across from evidence. They're right next to the jail, next to the armory. All of their staff are consolidated. The challenge, of course, goes to funding and the DA, the DA then moves upstairs to the main level. Everything else is essentially the same in this concept, except for those two departments. But of course, going back to Colleen's point, everything comes down to sort of budget and just how tight everything is. And there's not really, we're designing these spaces, but there's not necessarily the funding for it right now to implement it. So I think that's a question. I think everyone likes this concept, especially from a phasing perspective and in sequencing construction, right? It's a little bit easier. You could build out some of these spaces fairly easily and then shift people around during construction with this layout. But there needs to be funding for the DA if they're going to move as well, so.
So currently beside the DA's offices are IT team? Would they have space if we were able to do that? Where we, where we would move the DA, would we have room for those people?
Yeah, I think we can work that in.
Okay.
Yeah, and then long term, I think that was another question for the sheriff is if there's a solution to move storage offsite, does this now become a, you know, additional training room or how does this space get utilized? But it's something to consider. We felt like it was worth looking at. So any questions on the layouts and where we are? Like I said, we're, we've been revisiting with the user groups, kind of getting a little bit more honed in on the needs of each room and making sure that, you know, their space is adequate. Just refining the concept based on their input. I would like to, I'd like for SGM to go through their systems options right now, if that's possible.
Lauren, um, do you want us to cover the mechanical system real quick, just from a time standpoint? Or do you want me to jump right to the, the yard and generator questions? You're almost at two o'clock, so.
I know, let's look at the yard really quickly. I think Amber had flagged a few things in her code analysis that we discussed last week. She did a nice exhibit that I think is food for thought, and then Brian can present his options really quickly. Amber, do you have access to share?
Just, um, no, I do not have participant screen sharing. That worked.
Thank you, I mean, sorry.
No worries. It's all good. All right, so just to kind of, to kind of introduce this, I'll just give a, a quick overview of some of the issues that we flagged from an MEP perspective. And then I'll go through this little sketch, which we think would be an efficient way to address most of those issues, or at least a, a good chunk of them. The first one, of course, that most people are aware of at this point is that there, where the new addition is planned, we have an air intake for the existing boiler and also the gas service entry that are going to be covered up by that new addition. So those two elements need to find new homes on the exterior. The second thing is that the existing generator indoors has a couple of, of significant issues. The first being that, that indoor generator rooms have a number of special code requirements. The first being that, that indoor generator rooms have a number of special code requirements associated with them. And this existing room does not meet those. I'll, I'll avoid getting too far into the details, but suffice to say that we have some safety and fire hazard concerns with the way that room is laid out and built. And it's, it appears to be just overcomplicated and probably cost prohibitive to, to fix that room in its current location. It just doesn't work very well. It's kind of crammed into a corner back there and it's not really practical to make it code compliant. So what that means is that if we touch it, that generator on a practical level really has to move outside, which is where we normally put these just due to the complexity and cost of doing it indoors in a code compliant fashion. So question becomes, do we need to touch that generator? So did quite a bit of digging in terms of what does that generator supply? What should it supply? Is it reliable, looking at the age of it? It's a pretty old piece of equipment. It's still functional right now. But given the changes in modern loads and looking at the things that really should be backed up in a place like a sheriff's office and what is backed up now, there's some significant deficiencies that to my mind, points to a generator replacement as a really, really good thing to plan for. It would be great if it could be done in this project, simply because we're rewiring and remodeling the sheriff's office. That's the primary reason for a generator. So whether or not a new generator could be purchased in this project, it makes a lot of sense to design for one, to design to accommodate it, to design the wiring to support the loads that should be backed up. So that is something that, that we've been keeping our eye on and trying to figure out how, how could we design this project to make it easy to add a generator in the future? And then maybe carry an ad alternate, see if it's possible to, to just install it with this project for the sheriff's office primarily. The third issue that we noted, there's some erosion going on, on the slope where the existing utility transformer sits. That's fairly easy to fix, but I mentioned it in the context of this plan. And then we also noted some security vulnerabilities. You have some very critical electrical equipment that's sitting there on the exterior of the building. It's exposed to vandalism. It's exposed to vehicle impacts. And that's not an ideal situation for a secure facility. We noted that the, one of the main, the main distribution cabinet out there had actually been impacted by something. It didn't take very significant damage, but the frame has already been bent by some kind of impact. I would note that if that impact had been more serious, if it had been a larger vehicle or hit it harder, that would have taken down the whole building. And the mobile generator that would normally be used to back it up, wouldn't even be able to back it up in that case because that equipment is downstream of where that generator would connect. So I think you've got a, a security concern there that we'd like to see addressed in this building, in this project. The air intake louvers are also debatably could present a point of entry into the building if they're exposed as well. So to kind of look at all of those issues, this sketch is a layout that we have come up with. I'll zoom in here. This blue shaded area is the new addition. We are proposing a concept where we would create a fenced, secure yard to kind of consolidate all of these utilities into. This would be a pad where a potential future generator could sit. We could kind of reserve the spot now, whether or not we can afford to buy it. We can relocate the air intake adjacent to this door in order to make room for this generator pad and some new air intakes for the new boiler, which Brian will discuss in a moment. I can rearrange some of the electrical equipment here.
And can you remind him, Amber, where the existing louver is and that existing gas meter?
Those are, in purple here, you're seeing the lower floor. And then in gray, you're seeing the floor above. Apologies, it's a little bit confusing, but they're both relevant here. But the existing louver is right here underneath the addition. And the existing gas service is also right there. That'll be underneath the new Sally port. So of this existing electrical equipment, the largest cabinet really should stay for a number of reasons. I won't get into at this moment, but these pieces would be relocated over here into a little nook. That nook would be created by taking that little tiny L-shaped retaining wall that exists there and just extending it out to the parking area. And that would kind of be a, provide a way to shore up that slope behind the transformer and stabilize this a little bit. And then create a little nook where we can relocate some of that equipment and still have this air path. And we would have to replace that kind of no parking area where the mobile generator could sit. And that could also provide some access to trash. And then this, this line with the circles in it would be where that fence would be located. So we'd line up a gate with the doors that you could still bring large objects in and out of here. If this were done, if the new generator were installed, of course, that also provides a side benefit of being able to reclaim some storage space back here where the existing generator room is. So that's a nice side benefit. And last but not least, the new gas service. We looked at a lot of different locations and it seems like this is really the only practical spot back here on the northwest corner of the building. Although that may mean that one of the windows up there might not be allowed to remain operable anymore. It might have to be converted to a fixed window, but this seems pretty practical so far.
Yeah. And we just have a storage area there anyway, so that, that would be okay.
Any questions on this or thoughts?
Yeah, as far as protecting that transformer, it doesn't change a whole lot with someone with a big, heavy-duty truck backing up into that thing. Could we just use concrete pilings or something like that, maybe to shore up that spot?
Yeah, some bollards in front of this. And we would, we would discuss this with the electric utility as well, because they, they would really govern. This, this piece of equipment belongs to Excel, not to you. So they really govern what you can and can't do with that. Now, I did initially sketch this out where the fence would come up here and encompass that transformer and provide some impact protection, similar to the way it does down here. But that's something we would have to talk about with Excel and kind of weigh the pros and cons of. But whether you did that or not, I think the layout would change, wouldn't really change. It would just change the fence and bollard locations.
I think I like this. I mean, I, I think it's important to look ahead, right? Those, your existing generators are not gonna be around forever. And I think at least planning for the future of, and how you could plug in a new one. It's certainly not a fun way to spend your money, but it's pretty meaningful for this building, for these uses. And I think it's something that we at least wanted to make you see this and maybe start thinking about it. And it's, it's something that can easily be priced by FCI. I mean, whether or not you take it is, is something we can discuss later.
I think what I, my recommendation would be to design for this in this project. Make the, the wiring to support this generator and truly back up the sheriff's office the way it should be backed up, all the loads in there that should be up and running and during a power outage. And automatically, it's an important note. Right now, this small generator happened, comes on automatically without anyone's help when the power goes out. But to back up anything beyond that small set of little scattered circuits throughout the building, you've got to wait for maintenance staff to go get the mobile generator, bring it here and hook it up. So there's a delay inherent in that. That's not optimal. And that generator is about the same age and it can only back up one facility at a time. So there's a lot of limitations to that that are really not optimal for a sheriff's office. So if we wire the project, wire the new sheriff's office to support this generator, or rather to be supported by it, you could carry an ad alternate that just represents the cost to actually purchase this equipment and plug it in. But the base scope would include making this place and all the wiring. So it's plug and play later on when you can actually afford to buy the equipment, which is the lion's share of the cost.
Yeah. Does anyone in the room know what the general cost of a generator that would be sufficient would be? Is that something you know of ballpark, Amber?
You know, I'd have to look into it a little bit. You know, the, the footprint that I've shown here is basically the biggest generator that I would guess that you would end up with. But if you do want to go this route of designing for it now, the first step, you know, we get a little farther into that process would be, I would sit down and work with you, with the county, with the user groups and try to identify what are all the loads that we would want to back up on the system? And once I have that list, that enables me to, to size that generator. And at that point, I could give you a pretty, pretty good cost estimate for what it would actually cost to put it in.
Cool.
This is Michael. I do have a little bit of information. I think the one at our office was paid for by emergency management under a federal grant or something. I think it was about 30 grand. But it's about the size that would be needed at the courthouse to operate that.
It might be, I think it would be north of 30 grand to back up the whole sheriff's office and some other ancillary spaces.
That's possible. All I'm saying is that we might be able to get a grant for that from the federal government.
Yeah, I think definitely would be looking for grants if you want to go this generator route, which I think is a good idea. You know, if I, hand wavy between 50 and 100 grand, it'd be in that neighborhood somewhere, I would think. Just, just, that's just the purchase price of the equipment itself, of course. It doesn't include pound pre-transfer switch and all that. So we, we'd have to work a little harder to dial in that number, but I think it's in that ballpark. And yeah, I think a generator, if it were installed in this project, could also add some functions to the building. You know, if you wanted to add, say, the commissioner's room or that shared conference room could double as an emergency management office, you want to back that up? So you can look at, once you start sizing the generator yourself, you can look at adding some functions like that if that might help some grants come into play. So.
Yeah, that's what we just did.
To talk about there.
Hinsdale County, we just did that for them, but they pursued an emergency operations grant. And it was, they had a dedicated, well, it was a, it's a conference room, but it served as their emergency operations center. And then they got a new generator as well, but it was all, they're serving a large area, just like you guys. But yeah, it's something to look into.
Yep. I've done the same in a couple of other counties as well. It, it works well.
So if we let this room do dual function as an emergency planning center, we could also use some of our dollars to move our wall back a little bit.
That's what I wondered.
That's good thinking.
Your EOC is really, to say the least.
Great. I like the, uh, forward thinking with putting in, you know, options, keeping options open. And you know, for obvious, obvious reasons, a generator from 1995 that's underpowered for today's demands sounds like a serious weak link in the chain.
Well, and if, if we're okay on time, I'd like Brian to kind of go through a couple of items. And it's kind of related to this diagram as well, because what we're doing, you have an important louver on the, on the west side of that space, but our Sally port is gonna close it off. So we're looking at, you have a lot of HVAC issues in the building, but just by building that Sally port, it's gonna create some issues. And so I wanted Brian to kind of present a couple of options of, he's been studying this. I think there's a clear front runner in terms of how to address some of the HVAC issues. But I'd like him to maybe present what he's looked at this last week and a half.
Sure. Thanks, Lauren. Um, gosh, where to start? So, so we kind of, we looked at a lot of options. You know, I tried to approach this with an open mind and kind of my, my takeaway was steam is a great system. It's appropriate for the climate. It appears that the boiler that you guys have now is in good condition and operating well. I, I understand the zoning is, is, is not so good, but the boiler itself seems okay. And it's in the interest of the project to, I think, keep that for the time being. So then the question is, how do we serve the new spaces and look to the future as well? In which case I would not want to double down on, you know, more steam boilers or anything like that. So where we landed is, is continue to use the steam boiler that's there and, and serve the existing spaces. And then all the new spaces would be converted to hydronic. So you'd have a more efficient boiler in there with a smaller footprint. And that, there's plenty of room to put that in the same mechanical room right next to the boiler that you guys have now. Then the new boiler would be much smaller. And that will allow you to add on to that, add redundancy, add more zones, add more turn down and add, well, it'll come out of the gate more efficient as well. And also, if, if in the, down the road, if you wanted to, we'd have to coordinate with Amber, of course, but you could technically convert that to all-electric very easily from a mechanical standpoint, because it's in one central location. So that said, the, the issue that we see right away is the existing combustion air intake. So the, this is the air that the boiler consumes, you know, to have combustion. It's located kind of right there in that, that bright blue area where the Sally port would hopefully go. And that thing is, is super important and it, it, it's very code-driven. And so it, it's also probably very illegal right now in the fact that I, I think the, the gas meter is right. I want to say it's right in front of, if I remember right. That's a big no-no. So the trick is, where do we, where do we relocate that? That will allow for the construction to continue. And so we came up with kind of two options. The first is just, is those couple of green arrows right there by the generator. You can see it says new boiler, air intake and fluid intake ducts. Those will actually be pretty small, but we could locate the louver there to serve the existing steam boiler. It's probably in the range of a, of a three-by-three louver. But for various reasons, we feel like it's much better to actually move it down to that other green arrow that's right, it's just to the left of the north entrance to the mechanical room. Yeah. So relocated boiler, air intake. And what that's gonna allow us to do, it meets code. It's gonna need to be up high, you know, within 12 inches of the ceiling, which is a, a pretty good, pretty, pretty critical piece for us. Code-wise, we kind of looked at some photos. I think there might be some irrigation lines there or something, but it did, did appear that there's room. It sits behind the secured area or the secured fence, which I don't think is a code requirement. But like Amber was discussing, I think it's a great idea in general. It's, you know, just that much more secure and it does not have to be ducted if we put it over there. So it'll be, it'll be cheaper. So that's, that's kind of the, the gist of it, I guess. And then as far as the, the gas meter, what we thought is we would relocate that. As far as we can tell right now, the gas meter only serves, it basically just serves the boiler. But the old boiler needs to stay up and running. So if we relocated that gas meter up to the, kind of the northwest corner of the building, we believe that's where the existing gas lining is and gas line is underground. So you just demo it back. And so yeah, hopefully they can install the meter, kind of pre-prep everything. And then, and this is regardless of if the Sally port gets built for the time being. And they can, they might even be able to do a hot tap. But ideally, they can make the transition very quickly, rather than bringing the whole building down for, you know, days and days. There's, you know, it needs to be, the meter needs to be accessible. It's really, again, driven by the utility company. They typically prefer be on a corner of a building. It needs to be away from any kind of electrical receptacles and entrances to the building. So, you know, looking at the photos, I think there's, there's one condensing unit. We might have to move a few feet. And there's one operable window, which is, we're pointing to that, to it right there in the green. We may need to figure out a way to make that a fixed window if it doesn't meet the clearance requirements. But that, that felt like whichever way the construction goes, that would be pretty easy to implement. Minimal, minimal new pipe to hook up, you know, the generator, if we go with that, the new boiler, keep the existing boiler running and free up this entire space or, or wall where the existing louver is now. So we can add a Sally port, hopefully. With that said, was in the, any questions?
Oh, go ahead, Matt. Go ahead.
What about air quality? Is that your department as well, Brian, or is that somebody else's? Somebody else's department, like HRV, you got some rain on in the basement. You know, especially those inner offices with no windows, they're gonna need some fresh air.
Yeah. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a topic that we're, that I'm anticipating. It's hard to address super specific until we pin down the layout. But the idea that we're kicking around internally, so, so there's very much a ventilation component to all of these spaces, almost all of them. And an extra component, you know, an extra. And an extra component, you know, an extra um layer of air quality, you know, a high, a high rate that we're going to need just due to the type of spaces they are. So evidence storage, you know, the jail cells, that's, it's probably going to be all exhaust. In addition to like more typical spaces like office. So I, there, there's so little room in here and so little ducting that we're thinking we're needing, needing to avoid a large central type system. And so what's likely going to happen is we'll have a a dedicated uh ERV, energy recovery unit or makeup air unit of some sort, probably multiple ones. So maybe one on the, located like on the roof, on the south wing, maybe one on the main roof. And then more than likely, um, a larger one on the Sally port roof, because if that's where the uh, that that's one of the areas that's going to require the highest airflow with the, if the jail cells are there and the um yeah, basically the jail cells, that's a higher rate. So yes, that is in my department. There are code specified rates. Those rates are significantly higher due to uh than a typical office space due to kind of the specialty spaces here. And um it's also, you know, something to think about. It's any anytime you're bringing outside air in, hence the ventilation, that's more conditioning that needs to occur, AKA more energy that needs to occur versus just recirculating it. So you want to balance how much outside air you need. You know, you want the right amount, but you don't want, it it comes at a cost, right? So one of the things I'll be looking at and probably talking to M W L with is there's, there's uh equipment out there, such as like an ERV, energy recovery unit, where you know, what goes, what goes in, AKA fresh air must come out. So that's exhaust. And that exhaust is coming out at room temperature. It's already conditioned. And so it has heating value to it. And if we strip that out, the the heat content out of that and inject it into the incoming air, we can preheat it and therefore save a lot of energy. But there's a very small amount of cross contamination that we'll, we'll work through with um M W, M W L to see if that's something acceptable. But if we can, that's the equipment we'll probably come out of the gate recommending just to help save energy. And absolutely, I mean, right now, I don't think there's any ventilation. So it it should be significantly better.
And one thing I'll note as well is, you know, we're talking about a building that has no code required ventilation. Now, we're going to be adding that. That's new equipment and new power demands that don't exist right now. That if we want the sheriff's office to stay operational during a power outage, those are new loads that also need to be backed up by the generator for that space to be fully functional. So that kind of ties back to the new generator issue as well. All interconnected.
So hydraulic boiler and ERVs, Brian, is is a clear frontrunner in your mind?
Yes, E ERVs, if we can, if we can um if the cross contamination where we apply it is acceptable. And and just so you guys know, I mean, that that would be on the order of like just a few percentage points or something. So very, very small. Probably the, the thing I didn't cover is is most of your for lack of a better term, like your average space, your average office. What we'll do in those spaces is put a fan coil unit, which is kind of just what it sounds. It can be ducted or unducted, but it's a, it's a small unit. Um, it's a zone, has a fan, and it'll have a hydraulic heating coil in it. So that's how we're getting heat into the space. So your zoning will increase tremendously. And then we'll need ventilation in addition to that. So the ventilation will actually be a separate system, either to the fan coil or to the room. But what that means is that there's kind of two duct systems, right? Each room has the heating system and a ventilation duct system. So there's going to be quite a bit of duct which, of course, you know, we have limited space. So I'm very cogn- cognizant of that. I think that'll be one of our biggest challenges and therefore multiple, probably multiple smaller systems, so that we don't have like a giant trunk duct going down the corridor, that just won't fit.
Brian, uh, I see you mentioned that the um cells in the sheriff's office near the Sally port there are going to have some of the uh highest ventilation demands. And I I'm looking at that boiler and that lengthening the intake. Is there an exhaust component in that as well? Is that why there's two lines down there with an arrow going each way?
Yeah, it's a, it's a little confusing. So the it's, there's, there's two different types of boilers we're talking about here. So the existing steam boiler is going to use, what what we'd like to see is it use that bottom green arrow uh by the dive of the entry. And so it draws combustion air through that louver indirectly and then burns it, you know, it it so really draws it through the space. And then it has a a flu or a chimney coming out the top. That chimney cannot change. The new boiler, the new boiler is all sealed combustion. So it has a fully ducted um combustion air intake and combust and flu exhaust. So those are what I have labeled as like eight inch. That's for the new hydraulic boiler. And because it's all sealed combustion, we have a little bit more flexibility where we terminate those.
Right.
Versus the steam boiler, which we need that two by three louver to bring in the, in the combustion air and then the, it's a
Is it possible to get an eight inch duct that has an, like a sixteen inch sleeved outer area for our intake? So we'd get some preheating on this, on this fresh air we need to bring into the building? But that, does that sound crazy? Or is that like, I don't know, seems like we, it seems like we're pushing a lot of heat out, but we need to heat air that's coming in. If you had like a, a sleeve around one of those exhaust ducts that would kind of preheat a bunch of air that's coming in.
Right. So um Stuart can back me up on this. When I was, when I was uh, when I was in the space kind of looking at the condition of the existing steam boiler, I, I knowingly touched the flu of the steam boiler and it's, and it still burned my hand because it's not using the correct type of uh flu, flu duct. Those are different things, flu and duct, right? So what does that mean? It means you have all this heat going out the top that uh is wasted energy. And so, you know, maybe this is all how to build a watch type thing, but that basically the bottom line is, um, if you were to strip that heat out, that gas would condense and it's very acidic and the boiler needs to be designed for such.
Yep.
And and so, and so you don't. And so you're, you're limited to about eighty percent efficiency on that boiler. Now, the new boiler.
Okay. You create new problems when you cool those exhaust gases too much.
Yes, but the new boiler would do that automatically. So if you put your hands, you, you can actually use plastic for the flue vent on the, on the hydraulic boiler. And that is where the efficiency, extra efficiency comes from. There's a special heat exchanger there that condenses that gas. And you, you'll actually drain it down the uh floor drain. It's a little acidic, but it's, there's a way to neutralize it with some lime chips and things like that. So you're going to go from roughly eighty to eighty-three percent in the perfect world on the steam boiler to the new boiler, which will operate in the range of ninety-three to ninety-seven percent efficiency. I would say, you know, most of the time we will probably be in that ninety-five percent efficiency right off the bat. All else equal, your, your um your gas bill will see the difference due to that one aspect alone.
Great. Thanks for explaining that.
Yeah. And Commissioner Andy, just one more thing. This is loosely taken from the ranking cycle. And we need a cooler temperature to begin with. Um taking it to a hotter temperature. And that's kind of how the cycle works for a higher efficiency.
Okay.
So I think my goal, I, if this sounds like we're on the right path, I'd like S G M to continue to pursue this with our S D deliverable. We'll have a narrative and maybe a schematic with some preliminary equipment that F C I could put numbers to. But that would be the goal that I, I think this is the clear frontrunner, just given the flexibility long term and the benefits long term. And then I think our, our task will then be, okay, well, how do we accommodate the ventilation? How do we find the room? Et cetera. And then we coordinate that with the plans. But I think in talking to Brian, this, this makes a lot of sense. And I think we're starting to find some opportunities of how to make it work, just like in this diagram here with the coordinating the new and the old.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up question about the radon? It's pretty high levels down there, and I think it needs to be addressed. Brian, is there any way to address that with the air handling system that you're talking about in the exhaust side?
You know, to be honest, to be honest with you, this doesn't typically fall in our scope, but from what I see, it's, it's generally a pretty, pretty simple um exhaust fan at the, at the lower levels, levels. And usually what we see is like visqueen over the, over the grade. So I don't know how that would work here. But it would be a, a separate exhaust fan. It would be small at a, at a low rate. Um I don't know if I could add much more than that. You know, you, you want, you want to minimize it, right? Because what, what goes out must come in. And so that means you need additional makeup air, conditioned makeup air to come in. But it's, I mean, it's, it's something that could be done, but I I wouldn't say that's within our typical scope.
I would say that overall importance, it's pretty important. Uh, you know, those poor people have been stuck in that basement for years. They second leading cause of lung cancer, radon gas.
Sure.
Is there any provision for it at all, Lauren, or is, is anybody discussing it? Or am I the first?
Nope. You, we have discussed it and it is actually on our list of alternates. Um, I think Stuart talked about that pretty early on, too. Yeah. So we, we're aware of it.
It could chew up a significant amount of money in a retrofit.
Yeah.
I uh, I, we know we've touched on it before, but I've seen some pretty substantial radon reductions done with some very minor CFM fans and some PDC piping that has an exit somewhere.
Yeah.
Always really need to get under a foundation or anything like that. Sometimes just moving a little bit of air really drops those levels a whole bunch. At least my friends in home inspection have explained as much to me.
Yep. So that, that's on our radar. Um, Brian, Amber, thank you. Any other questions related to those systems?
I have none.
And I will say, so the last thing on my list, and I'll go very quickly, um the HVAC is tied to the courts as well. Um, and we've had some significant conversations with Elizabeth, you know, related to our underfunded courts app. And we're phasing, we're phasing the scope of the courtroom because we do know it's a heavy lift. There's a lot of money involved. But that too has issues with HVAC, with air quality, with just not being able to close windows, right? The envelope. So all of that, we're, we're kind of tracking as well. And that's going to be at least long term part of an ask with funding. But anyway, this all ties back to, we're addressing it with this design and with this project, and then we'll, we'll help strategize how to get funding for it with you guys. So I would like to share my screen. The last thing on my agenda today, and it's tied to, to the commissioners, obviously, is the grant application. So now that you're a little bit more up to speed with the, where we are, the direction we're headed, I think it helps to to understand sort of how we're going to approach this presentation, why we're asking for what we're asking and how we are tackling some of the issues. I know we're at two thirty, but Stuart sent out this template, and this was for the presentation to the underfunded grant folks. Do we want to set up a separate meeting with just Commissioner Bullock, Candace, Colleen, our team to kind of go through this and how we want to populate these slides?
Also, I think Sheriff Heath wants to be involved with this.
Okay.
I wonder if there's an opportunity to get it mostly built out, have that meeting, get it mostly built out, and then loop the commissioners in to run through it once it's
Okay.
ready?
Sounds good. Just tell me what to say, I'll say it. I'm not going to.
We're going to practice before we're there. I think maybe if we can get that idea kind of at least mostly built and then run through it, get a little feedback, that would probably be the best use of time and the fastest way to like get it all to come together before November when we're presenting.
So do you want me to run through it now?
Well, I don't think there's any content in there.
No, not really. It's basically the outline. Yeah.
If you don't mind, Lauren, could we have a meeting with staff and Heath? So you get the content mostly built and then we'll have a time with Matt to run through it when the content's in there.
Okay. Yep. And I, I think by next week, we should have some nice graphics. We'll, we'll certainly, we have the plans, but I think I'd like to give you a few three D snapshots that we can continue to refine, but those can help add, they can spice up the slides, so it's not all text and
Yeah.
a little more visual. Okay. So I'll leave that to you guys. Um, our next meeting would be on the thirty-first. So
So that's not a, I don't think that one's publicly noticed. We're trying to do a once a month where they can all come to
Yeah.
Come to, but I think it's a regular, just like we're groups.
O A C. Well, I think we'll target having some draft exhibits next Friday. We'll have our normal O A C on the thirty-first. And then I guess just keep us posted. We really, after the thirty-first, we really only have one more week to sort of bring it all together.
Yeah. If just Matt is joining us, it doesn't have to be a publicly noticed meeting. So that we find, we can, I can schedule something that works for all of us before.
All right. Well, we'll stay tuned. We'll keep working on stuff on our side. Um, yeah, Mike, Brian, any questions on your end?
Yeah, I was just curious. Um, is the S D deliverable, is that November seventh then? Did I hear that right?
Yes, I believe that's when we have it on our schedule.
Okay, perfect. Just one of the plans for when those come out. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any, any other questions? Anyone?
None for me.
None for me. Thank you very much.
Yes. One, one thing, Lauren, uh, kind of minor, um, we do supply gas to the built-in generator now. And if we go to a larger outside generator, we probably should let Excel know that we need to double check our pipe size. Um
We'll be checking that, Stuart.
Thank you. Thanks, Amber.
And then Michael, just FYI, um Gargi, I want to, I do want to have a separate meeting with you guys. I have some options on how we're doing the whole judges' bench, et cetera. But I do want to have sort of a focused user group meeting with you guys and potentially Chelsea.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And next week would be wonderful. So.
You bet. And I, I also can forward uh um a uh copy of of some former uh or prior grant applications or grant presentations that Lake County has submitted to the um underfunded commission, if you'd like to see that, just to give you guys some ideas. I send just, you may have it, but uh you, you may not either. And if you don't, I'd, I'd gladly share it with you.
Okay.
Yeah, please, please send that, Michael. Um, and I'll forward that to Catherine, who's going to help us with that piece.
Okay, super.
All right. Well, thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. For the hard work. Appreciate, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the updates.
All right, I'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Bye.
There's a chat there. Cool. Well, it's uh two thirty-nine P M. We will conclude this work session on Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Commissioner Bullock.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Stefan, for joining us.